Let's go ahead and proceed. I'd like to call of order the special school board meeting for Monday, October 15th, 2018. Sarah, would you please take the role?
Bowerman.
Yes, ma'am.
Hallid, here.
McKean.
Here.
Hoss.
Here.
Tomzik, Tucker, here, and Swanson.
Good evening, and we are going to add another agenda item which is pledge of allegiance. Everything else will shift down one, so if you'll join me, please.
On pledge of allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you've joined me, just taken a couple minutes here, for those that are aware, we had some tragic news about two of our students, Bushra Abdi and Zainab Abdullah, so we can take a couple minutes of silence to remember those students and their families. All right, new item three will be consideration of the agenda as presented, being that this is in fact a special board meeting, no additional agenda items are allowed. All right. The last one. Good?
Thank you.
You bet. So, item number three, consideration of the agenda as presented. Do you want to take a motion for that?
Second.
All right. Those in favor, say in private saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries. New item number four is old business, and we'll move right into point one, which is our superintendent of schools position. Point, I'll turn the floor over to personnel chair, David Key.
Thank you, sir, and I'd like to invite Keith Graef to the table. For those who don't know, Keith is our HR director and has been the facilitator of the search process. So, we've been on this journey for a month, month and a half now, ever since our tragic news with Superintendent Hager. So, we've had a fairly robust process, very robust process, I should say, that's involved by the Personnel Committee, several hours, dozens, scores of hours, maybe hundreds of talking to many candidates. We were all there last week for the culmination of that process where our two finalists came forward. So, I wanted first of all to thank Personnel Committee and Dave and Keith for their expertise and efforts and passion to get us to where we were Monday night. And then I wanted to say, from that point or from the time our finalists were in Orlando, I want to thank everyone who called, emailed, texted, stops at Hy-Vee, soccer fields, basketball courts, other places where I've gotten the gift of feedback, I'm guessing others have received feedback as well. I want to thank everybody who has shared their thoughts and opinions with us. It's been highly valuable and a highly informative listening process. So, we are here now to decide, first of all, whether or not we... First discussion and decision is, do we want to move forward? Do we feel like we have a qualified candidate who is ready to join our district? So, that's the first question. I'd love to hear at least thoughts on that.
In my opinion, I have a feeling person who I'd be willing to work.
Okay.
Yeah, I think two, three, Brad, two good candidates for, and I think, I think we need four to make a decision.
I'm very comfortable with the board decision. I guess we're going around the horn.
I also, after listening to all the feedback and doing all the research that I have done, I feel comfortable moving forward with the candidate tonight.
In a word, yes. I was one of the ones who expressed a little hesitation early on, so I think it's important for me to elaborate on that in the sense that a more typical process would be in the spring, and I reached the conclusion based upon what you guys did, and I want to thank you again, the committee, and Dave and Keith in particular, for championing this process. I don't think that the spring, although it's unknowable, who else might come forward, it's not something we can know today. I believe we had a very strong candidate pool of both breadth and depth, thirty, the number, over which, two-thirds of which had superintendent experience. We had rural, urban, we had big districts, small districts, and women. That's why I feel comfortable, even though I had some additional hesitation, that yes, we had a very good pool to choose, so I am comfortable at this point making this decision.
Just one point further.
Yeah, sorry, I was at the high school.
That's good.
Without that, my goodness, Keith.
Sorry.
But we're currently discussing whether or not we want to move forward, and then we discuss the candidates next. Just to be clear, it was twenty-one of them were either superintendents with assistant sups, fifteen were current or former superintendents, that's one of the things we're being precise, but yeah, for the most part, on a superintendent.
My one, two-thirds.
Yeah, right, but not, a few of them had only an assistant sups now.
Well, we'll talk about a superintendent, sure.
I just want to make sure.
And to catch Judy up, we did an around the horn, because Matt asked the question whether or not we are comfortable moving forward tonight, and so far, everybody has said that they are comfortable moving forward. You're the last one. Matt hasn't.
Matt hasn't.
Oh!
I asked, didn't I?
We have.
So, you're not?
Okay, I'm sorry. Again, I totally apologize for being late. I almost did a car accident getting here from high school, like, school's actually right now, I'm exaggerating. Okay, you know, my reservation about not going ahead right away this fall was a little bit about the candidate pool, but for me, it was really more about, you know, so many things happening in our schools, the teachers are adjusting to so many things for them, I didn't want that we would be looking for someone new. But since I've been reassured that Dave's going to stay where Dave is, and Ford's going to stay where Ford is doing Dave's job usually, that gives me a lot of reassurance, and I will say that I had about, let's see, I had, I think it was six or seven communications with different teachers about not going ahead right now, and all of them said, because Dave would do such a good job, let's stay with Dave, which I think that's very nice. A couple, two or three of them expressed concerns about if we wait a while, will we have a more diverse group in terms of ethnicity or gender or something like that. I would say that that is a need in our district, for sure, to hire a variety of people that would fit our student body. I don't, I suspect there aren't a lot of candidates like that out there, but I guess I would know that part.
Well, that was something that was very important, too, I think all of us have heard, we had several conversations about that. What Reddick said was, we don't know what the candidate pool would be in the spring. I'm not confident that if we wanted to, the board decision stayed with somebody with superintendent experience, I'm not confident that we could get somebody who meets that level of criteria of experience and brings that diversity. It just, when we say we want somebody with superintendent experience, word to a candidate pool that is, Keith, you might know better than I, it's something like eighty percent male and almost exclusively white, and so therefore it would be, you know, reposting and hoping that a more diverse pool came forward. I, you know, I don't know that we'd get much better odds in the spring, myself, and that's my opinion.
Well, we still better be hired in a basis of all institutions.
Well...
And of course, that wasn't suggested.
I know, I know, but my point is that we don't know what the pool's going to be, in as much as we might like to think that the pool might be a little different, we don't know that. And so, the question is, do we have a qualified pool? I believe we did. Straightly qualified. And I think we're pushing over that.
I would like to add something, if it's okay, that I don't know that we've made very clear, in that when we posted the position, we were very clear in the posting, that the candidates could choose whether or not that they would be willing to start sooner, or whether they would prefer a July first or only consider a July first start date, because we did that deliberately, because we wanted to know if there were candidates out there who reached out to us that were only available to start in July, we wanted to know who they were from the beginning, and I will tell you that we did have three candidates that said, I would be interested in being a part of your pool in July, however, I cannot commit to right now. I will tell you that after looking through their three, after looking through their qualifications, they were not, they did not stand out to me as individuals who were better than the other twenty-seven that we had. And so, I just want people to know that every superintendent in the state of Minnesota was given an opportunity to tell us when they're, if they were interested in the position, when their preferred start date was, so.
So, Judy, did I say?
So, I'm, my own decision after looking through, thinking it over, is that especially it'll be an opportunity to have Dave here, that they could work together and bring those together.
Then I'm in the same place. Right. And I see not only from a candidate team, when you're in great person on the term, but I also feel like it is such an opportunity to have Dave here and have an integration plan where somebody can truly, Dave can keep running ship, right? And this person can go sit in the back of classrooms, sit in the teacher's lounge at Eagle Creek, and go to, you know, go to different buildings and really study and learn what's all the great things that are going on in the district, as opposed to, hi, you're in charge, go ahead and, you know, start making decisions today, right? Well, I don't know, you know, I don't know all the context, so that's what I'm, why I think it's important, all that coupled with the fact that I firmly believe we have a very strong candidate, I believe, where we should be moving forward. So, we don't need any formal action on that, right? It's, we just became one action. Keith, Dave, anything you guys would like to add to either the process, or the finalists, or the feedback you guys have been given? I think most of the feedback that I got, you guys were copied up, and so, and it was pretty consistent as well across the board. I think it was probably either weighing ninety-ten, that ninety percent of it said this about a candidate and this about a candidate, and kind of what, where they were at, so it was, it was pretty telling, I think, where people were at consistently.
So, we had, I mean, we did have a lot of people, not only weighing from afar, but people who were involved in the day of the tour, of course, your interview meeting, but prior to that, we had tours, and then we had four different groups, principals, cabinet level, teachers, and nonlicensed staff, all involved in the interview process. I think we heard really positive things from the involvement of those groups, too.
Just, I don't know if we can throw out an approximate number, when you, because obviously the seven of us, eight sitting up here, got to interview with them and interact with them, you know, was it, you know, three or four people in each of those interviews? How many staff people actually got to sit and meet with them and talk with them and learn about them?
The teachers was a sizable group, it exceeded ten.
Okay.
Might be more toward between ten and twenty. Are you lucky as to?
I look at you, I'll make sure you're in there. We had seventeen.
You had seventeen teachers.
So, I can't, I don't know that I have to count for the nonlicensed staff that were both professional levels and others.
I think fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen, the affiliated.
I agree. So, we're north of thirty right there.
And we still have two other groups, the principals.
The principals would have been all the...
Probably the eight to ten.
Yeah, and then our...
And then cabinet.
But you were in there, how many were in there?
Eight to ten.
Okay. So, motion fifty. I can't count them. And then the board candidates who had to fill out feedback forms, and those.
Yep, and we heard from many of them, a lot of email, too, a lot of mail from Stan.
And then, not only in the formal interviews, but I think you and Jeff Priest were, what you call the Uber drivers, the shuttle drivers between sites for tours.
Because, well, I think, you know, we, I did follow up with each of the buildings, and I think some people that had interactions with the various candidates during those tours contacted me, so people also had sort of that impromptu, and I don't remember who said it, but everything's an interview, right? So, you're, you know, people were moving about the building and were, you know, were getting to, I don't want to say our district, but people were getting to see them, and people who aren't in the interviews were able to have some level of interactional feedback and some of them, I think, moving forward. So, there's, you know, I'm, Dave's the data guy, but I have a little, I have a little data in my bag, and they're all data points, right? And the more data points you have, the more opportunity you have to make a more informed decision, so I think there were a lot of data points, and I think that's pretty objective.
And Judy, before you were here, we were talking about just the volume of emails, calls, texts, you pulled aside at Hy-Vee, the other, I'm guessing you with your track record with the staff, I'm guessing a lot of staff members contacted you, maybe more so than the rest?
I have eighty-six. Eighty-six. So, I might have missed that, I mean.
So, I was going to say, one other thing, and I mentioned this this morning in our cabinet meeting, too, and that is, I was asked, I visited the SEA exec board meeting last week, and Dale and his group said, they had some questions about the process, and as I answered them, I thought it was things that everybody knew, kind of because they'd been said in some of the thinking, but it wasn't. People said after hearing that they felt better about the process and understood the thinking, so that caused us to send out a very detailed message that I think is now posted on the website as well, of the kind of the process, and a really abbreviated FAQ, which I still think, I was surprised at that, like you were, but I got a lot of replies, I didn't quite get the six, but I got a lot of replies saying, thank you for that, and I got it from the exec board of the SEA, and there's a district leadership team with representation from each building, and that group was also appreciative of that information. So, I think it was kind of a, almost a reminder that we can't overdo it, so. It's a great reminder. And just to point out the differences, fourteen months ago, when we wound up hiring Gary, we wound up, it was just the cabinet, the principals who were able to take part, correct me if I'm right, we did, the adding in the non-certified, then the SEA group was an enhancement, is it correct, Dale? Correct. Yeah, so, we got a lot more data points, we got a lot more kind of hands-on, hopefully not literally, you know, the opportunities to touch and feel, you know, get, you know, we can't do it more. So, with all that being said, it sounds like, go ahead.
Well, I want to clarify what they did, that Judy said, because I want to make sure we're doing justice to the concerns of those who may be, we need to weigh. I only got a couple of those, so I didn't get as many as you mentioned, but was your sense, if you can say, was your sense that the renaissance was more the potential disruption, and we're comfortable with Dave, and let's just not upset the apple cart, but knowing that Dave's going to be in place, that would assuage some of their concerns? It wasn't that the process was wrong, or we shouldn't be doing anything now, period, it was more about Dave and...
I would say, little more than half about Dave, and then a few were about people who really thought if we waited, we'd get a greater minority in gender.
But that was a minority of eighty-six.
Oh, no, she's saying the minority of the seven.
No, I know that, but I'm saying that still, that concern, I have a handful, I think we probably all did, I'm doing the same thing, but that was, again, I was sensitive to that because I had my hesitation going into it, and that's not what I heard in any loud way, and as I said, it's completely addressed my concern about this, so I want to make sure that you haven't heard more of those, you think that they probably would be comfortable in letting the process stand, that Dave's going to transition.
I would tend to agree with Judy, that for me, I probably got six or eight of those as well, and some were, hey, what's your rush? Generally, sort of a general statement, no real context behind it. Some were, we love Dave, he's fantastic, let's leave him in place, but again, nothing more concrete, and then there were others that were also interested, to Judy's point, that maybe the well actually could go deeper if we waited, and I think we've already exhausted that particular conversation, so, yeah, it was a handful, definitely out of all of the emails, but I got, you know, I just stopped counting, I couldn't count anymore, but yeah, it was a surprise. But... But there's a handful of people who I respect, and I like, that's why I take the time to digest and respect their opinion, I ultimately don't agree, but I understand and respect them. And it was a couple of teachers, a couple of, you know, citizens, a couple of folks who were themselves, so it was also a cross-section, it wasn't, that wasn't concentrated, it was all, you know, all just...
And I think there were a few people who thought that superintendents of larger metro schools would be interested in the position, and I tried to tell everyone, that's a lateral and also not looking for that.
Yeah, and I mean, Keith, that's something you told us when you first got here a year ago, right, that, you know, somebody from neighboring district, A, B, C, D, I don't know, I mean, district names, but they just don't move to similar districts, and if they are, it's kind of, well, why are you going to leave where you are? So, yeah, and, because that seems like a natural path, right? Okay, go to a district that's ten percent bigger, or, but no, it really is. And we've also, I've really come to like and respect the path that, you've described it better than I can, the suburban district experience, teacher, principal, you know, cabinet level, director, and then going out and getting a superintendent, but being a general superintendent, so your hands are in everything, you have to learn, you know, some of the bigger districts in O'Annepin, Minneapolis, Paul, you have a really, really narrow path, and you become highly specialized, and then to try and learn while you're the boss is a difficult prospect.
I mean, there's different pathways everybody takes, but there is, I mean, we all know, it is, it's one thing to be a director, or even assistant superintendent, it's quite another thing to be a superintendent, and that, it just involves another leg or so, I think.
I don't know if Dave would attest to that.
Well...
Here's a question.
But, you know, it's just a hard call, so I think, you know, if you were, if you
were creating pathways, you know, like, if you're creating sort of a succession plan, you'd like that people have both those experiences if you could, because it is, it is different, no matter how you, whether you start out in one or the other, but that's always how you'll experience, at least from what I've seen, but I would agree, most of the groups, and I haven't worked on the west metro, I've worked on the east metro, but I can tell you on the east metro, typically, the new superintendents are small districts or people who have been in the director, assistant superintendent, that's almost always what I've seen in pools both I've been part of and surrounding districts. Can you hardly see that lateral?
So, are we comfortable with moving forward to discuss the candidates themselves? What about if I just kind of give a thirty-second snapshot, and their profiles have been public, and we've all seen them, we've all, they've been a lot, I want to just remind us, we all try and strip to strengths, right? We don't need to, you know, beat anyone up, or unless, unless it's going to be a, you know, multi-round debate like we had last year, we'll be, we can strip that, we can do some more. Is that comfortable? Okay, so, in interview order, Mike Funk came in, Dr. Funk, from Albert Lee, had had good ten years there, previous experience at Volt, so he has an abundance of superintendent experience, I think he proved to be what we on the committee saw from him, somebody who is a problem solver, somebody who's got some very impressive results, just the financial side of the house, keeping a bun balance where it's at, and three for three in operating reference, that's just a pretty impressive accomplishment. So, I think that, you know, he's definitely a problem-solving leader and a driver, and somebody who's going to get stuff done. So, that's kind of how I would summarize Dr. Funk. Anybody else have any kind of other strengths that they want to add before we move on?
I think he's a very strong process guy, putting in processes that can help streamline some operations, I think that he's a very, very smart man, and has obviously found success as a superintendent in the two districts that he's been in, so.
To build on what Sean said, I think it's safe to say, Mr. Funk is a leader, Dr. Funk is a leader, in any definition, or he demonstrated that in the educational world, he demonstrated that in the military world, all the letters, the big guy, you know, attests to that, his leadership's not in question, he's a special qualities.
And those letters, I meant to mention that, thank you. I don't know if they went to every board member, I've gotten at least two dozen from current and former directors, principals, board members, from two different churches, some teachers, although most, most of the ones I've ended up getting from people who are director, who is...
Or, do they?
Yeah, including, I think, two that I received of shock, parents who knew him in the military, and all what you just said, very, very much leader, for the network.
Yeah, I mean, I think one person said I would follow him anywhere, you know, he was just an outstanding mentor and leader. We have a lot of those letters.
Any other comment?
I'd speak to the letters, too, they were, there's no question, they were very powerful, there's a lot of support for Dr. Funk out there, both in the Albert Lee area and in the military as well, and these were not like two paragraph letters, these were...
They were novels.
These were novels.
Very well written.
Yeah, well-written novels where they were providing very, very specific examples of demonstrated leadership, and it was very impressive, you know, you get one or two of them, you start getting a dozen, like you said, and it's like, there's clearly a trend here, so, very impressive.
He talked a lot about integrity and trust, and those are two things that we, we have a very important tangent, so I believe that he would be of high integrity.
When you say that, it struck me the quote from him, you know, when talking about operating, or education overall, you're touching the two, people's two most important things, their taxes and their children, and whatever, but, you know, that was, I mean, definitely, that's right to the core of the role of superintendent, you know.
I actually really liked your line, but bad news doesn't get better with age.
Yeah.
Now, I got to be started by that.
Yeah, and I truly believe that when you said it, I mean, that's, he's going to give it to you.
Okay, anything else on Dr. Funk?
I'll just add one other thing, since it was brought up by others, I was pleased about his, how his district's committed to the academy's problem, the fact that they have been exploring for some time, Alex has turned out in terms of their model, and are committed, and are on a path of doing it, since we're on that path, and we're committed to it, it may not be identical, but he clearly showed some knowledge and understanding of that, and to his credit, so I thought that was really plus, relative to his background.
That, him talking about that being the way of the future, definitely not just, you know, something that's, you know, a brand, that's, no, this is where education's going, we know that, so.
I do want to, you know, I know we're not going to beat anybody up, and we're going to focus on strengths, but I do want to call out that feedback is critical, and hearing the amount of feedback that we heard internally, about our two candidates, from members in our district, were, that also was very, very, very important. And there was one particular email, you know, that really drove home the point that you only get one chance to make a first impression, and unfortunately, Dr. Funk did not necessarily make a really good impression with a couple of individuals that are, I would deem to be incredibly important voices, they're all important voices, so I am a little bit concerned at, at the fact that that isn't a single comment, that there are others that also had that, that feedback, based on the day-long interviews, so.
I would, I would echo that, it, you know, based on the feedback that we got, and it was really important for me to listen to it all. There was, seemed to be a general consensus that we didn't connect as well with our staff, individually and collectively, and that's an important data point.
Okay, we're ready to move on to Dr. Redmond? Okay. Now, this is, he demonstrated his... Now, this is, he demonstrated his commitment and interest in the district right off the bat by interviewing last year when the job wasn't nearly as attractive or the job is now. He demonstrated his commitment by being the first one to express interest. He, I believe, has that nice balance of process-minded, results-driven, but also by being very warm and collaborative. And in the stories we are hearing from staff as you're looking to, in the tours, right? I mean, I think we, 20 minutes into the first segment of the tour, we're hearing about him on his hands and knees with specialty kids at Sweeney and then shooting hoops in the, in the gym with, during a tour, being so student-centric. So I think that's, you know, one of the things that was very impressive about him is his ability to have that kind of process brain, but also to have that heart that's open to students, to staff. My favorite quote of his was, you know, the smartest person in the room is the room.
I'm going to.
Took me a minute, because the room's, the room's not a person, but, but.
We got, we got the point.
Yeah.
That's not your quote.
Exactly. But no, I, I, I thought, I mean, that just typified what a collaborative leader brings to table. So I'll open up the floor.
His response to the question about diversity was nailed spot on.
What do you mean? They said it in the answers?
Yeah, I completely agree with what he said. Diversity is an asset. It's not enough to tolerate. But he responded.
That's what I just wanted to.
Yeah. That stuck out.
Yeah, and in that same area, he said that, you know, teachers in, in general, you know, those who, that he said, you know, I know they're real open, but sometimes we don't know what we don't know, right? I remember.
I also like what he said, that we need psychologically safe ways to help educators grow, meaning, he was talking about how, like you said, you don't know what you don't know and you have to make it okay for our educators to ask the questions and to be open to learning. And, and that was all within the diversity discussion. I thought that was really powerful too.
It could be long.
Yeah, it's a good word. I felt more from Mike Redmond, I want to be in Shockley, more excitement about a Shockley than I did from Mike. For me, it's really important that whoever we put in the seat really wants to be in Shockley and maybe not necessarily that X and O in their belt, but really want to be in Shockley and be committed to Shockley. I tend to think he would embrace Shockley right off the bat.
I think the word he used most in our 15 minutes, 45 minutes was listen, or listening or some form of that, which I thought was phenomenal.
Near finance, he talked about having taught economics himself and that he partners with finance manager that's clearly the improvement of this particular district, but we need partnership with our finance team, not necessarily just hierarchy, we need to be sitting side by side, make sure we can maintain that right ship, so that was important.
I liked when he said disagreements are great and then we can get together and make it our plan. It's not anybody's plan, it's our plan. I liked that too.
And I was at, ask the kids, don't talk. So in addition to what's been said, individual comments, I, I took, tried to step back and take a little bit more holistic view in my own analysis. And what I was really looking for was fit. And fit can be defined by each of us differently. But the way I conducted my analysis is I, I analyzed this in four ways. I looked at the candidates on paper, their qualifications, their experience. I looked at the interviews, what they said, and the things you're talking about, how they answered it. I looked at what happened that day and the feedback we got. So teachers, non-licensed, captain, principals, that was extremely valuable and highly consistent that we had. And then the fourth is the public confidence and that I included the candidates, which I appreciate their attendance and sending the comments, that's very helpful. All of those, all of those, for me, Mr. Redmond came out first. Clearly, it was a clear first for me. So then I looked at that and go, okay, if he's checking all the boxes, how about the fit? Again, that's a tangible fit. And for me, it was very clear, he wanted this job, he said it a few times and I believe it because not only was he here before, but, you know, we kind of turned him, turned the dance down, so to speak, last time and yet he was back again. I genuinely believe he wants this position, he had done his homework, he wanted to give that, the feedback, he did his homework on Shockley. So I believe Mr. Redmond, not unless he qualifies, Mr. Funk's qualified, but when it comes to the fit, and that was most important to me at this point, in a tangible way, I believe he is absolutely the right fit. When we talked about that, he talked about how he turned on Monty, he had kids and his wife all graduated.
He turned on that.
Yeah. And who knows what would have happened, but that's.
He didn't pursue it down, he had history with it, he thought there. I think Dave, he talked about how last year after he didn't, after Gary got the job, he didn't, I think he said, he had several conversations or, you know, had, had some conversations. That's right. I did talk to him. Yeah, I thought that was a class move to stay in touch. I, I tend to agree. Dr. Funk is, is highly qualified, has some very impressive accomplishments, but for what we're looking for right now for the fit that we need, with where we're at, where we've been at, and as Gary alluded to, we've got, we've had a lot going on. I believe that Dr. Redmond would be the right choice to partner with Dave. So it's my opinion, others?
I agree with what I was saying, what we're just saying. And if we went base just off of comments and emails that we got, it's very clear that Mike is the right one, Mike Redmond. Somebody at work asked me though, I was going to pick, and I said, oh, I think Mike, that's far as I'm telling you.
Yeah, the feedback has been.
Amazing.
Yes.
I think that's what Dave was good to, is kind of surprisingly how consistent, which is a good thing. Keep looking for, you know, why, but it's very good.
I think when you're here for eight hours with so many different groups, you are showing who you are issue and stuff like that, that's a hard game. Well, so I guess I'd like to make a motion to.
Sorry, sorry. Is that all right? I don't even know if this is allowed, I don't remember this last year, we were in a different.
Oh, boy. Process here, true?
But we were in a different situation last year and I have, we were just talking about the feedback and I actually had, Reggie had four, I had three things when I looked at it holistically, the qualifications, their feedback, and I called it personality, like, would they, would they fit in here? And those were my three things. And clearly the feedback that we got was incredibly consistent. But this year, it's a little bit different than last year in that this year we're asking this individual to work alongside Dave for six, the next six to eight months. Can I ask, before we make a motion, whether Dave believes he could work alongside an individual, this individual?
What's the other?
Not, all the feedback matters to me, but.
I can work alongside either one of these guys.
No, I can see, I can see the direction.
Okay. I saw feedback too. He's a great guy. I, as Matt alluded to, I did speak to him afterwards and there was no, there was no bitterness by this guy. He's a quality, quality guy and that's what all the feedback said and I, I'd be, I would be happy to work alongside him and I'd be glad to do that and I think I learned a lot from him as well, so no, I would be very glad to kind of.
Just that you, that's no question.
That'd be great. I'd be very comfortable with that.
So now I'd like to make a motion that we, what's the formal motion, really, enter into negotiations, we offer him the position, enter into negotiations? Who to who? With Mike Redmond?
I'll second that.
Okay, so there's a little motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I'd like to ask a question. And I'm really glad Sean said what she said early on about candidates couldn't submit their name. And, and I think we knew this, but it's very helpful, you know, very, some just submitted saying, I can't do it until July 1st. That just shows you that there was interest and yet most people could have done something. Where is Mr. Redmond in this mix in terms of his availability?
Well, that's going to be worked out as soon as.
Would have any sense?
Yes.
Yes, he has a ramp-up strategy, but it needs to be worked out with his current district, but it would be much sooner than July 1st. There's probably some part-time ramp-up yet this calendar year. And I think the goal would be to work towards full-time January 1st.
Okay, because that's important to me because frankly, if it was July 31st, I didn't think it was, or June 1st, whatever the date, I'd have a real problem with any candidate and I expressed that early on. So the fact that that's not the case, Mr. Redmond is an important factor in any case. So whether it's January 1st, January 5th, 10th, December 1st.
Well, he was very clear with me that he, if, actually, they both were, I think they were both very consistent that there would have to be a transition period, probably starting early November. And, you know, through November and December, there would be some sort of shared time so that both districts were being managed properly. And they both made it clear to me that by January 1st, they would like.
Because we don't want our crisis to become somebody else's crisis, so they're.
Yes.
Have you had a situation like that, Keith? And I'm certainly not going to dabble in the HR space, but having that world of business, how are we going to handle that? How are we going to handle that for the other district relative to just finances benefits? Who's the employee of?
You know, I mean, that, that would be, that would be different. It almost, you'd almost have to come up with an agreement about who's going to carry that, because it's, you're really then kind of in two worlds, which would be no benefits, to be honest. But I, I think you'd have to come up with an agreement maybe of how you can do that if we're, if we're splitting time.
It's not, it's not my place to go with solutions, but I guess having dealt with transitional roles in the past, I can, I can envision as a scenario where, and I'm going to just pull dates out of the air, January 1st is an official start date and the gentleman in question, in case this case, Mike, is able to take some kind of vacation time or whatever that allows him to be here, but he's still on payroll for them, he's still benefits by them. That, I'd refer to you guys to figure that out, but we do need to think about that.
I definitely, if you hear it, leave it to the professionals, figure out how we negotiate. I hear it, but it's important. But he also needs time off, if he's going to go from what I would want him to actually take time to relax and breathe and not have to chew PTO to come here.
I don't want to step into a problem, Scott, and then we have, you know, verbalize somebody figures it out.
Yeah, I mean, it, well, I, you know, to some extent too, it's probably not this a, well, not a problem. It's not a unilateral decision, because I think if he's going to work, if he's going to work in, in his district and he's going to work here, then I think both of us have to enter the conversation, how they would best want to make that happen.
Some kind of.
Yeah, it's, it's workable, it's always.
Would it be similar to Mr. McRae's sort of temporary, you know, could there be a temporary?
Yeah, I mean, I think, well, I think so.
Oh, you would benefit.
I mean, it really, I mean, you're, the salary is easy, the benefits is.
I disagree. We need to know, we need to voice these concerns because I need to know before I vote that we're recognizing that these are potential issues that need to be addressed, we're confident we are.
I don't think it's an issue, I think it's just a, to your point, it's a question of negotiation.
Not approving a contract, we're opening a cash flow.
All right, so there's a motion, a second, more discussion? It will have to be a roll call when we're ready for it. I would say again, though, just, you know, we've probably said this ad nauseam, the, the feedback is so appreciated and we got so much from so many people on both of these candidates. And it is that, it is really, really important because it came from so many different areas and it really did help to, quite frankly, it did help to solidify what I felt was the right thing to do before we ever had any of these conversations, without ever asking for it really, you know, it came in and it just reaffirmed it. It feels good to make a move on something that's just been reaffirmed through others without having to, you know, tell, tell me that you like me, you know, I mean, don't, it's not one of those things. It's, I'm happy that it worked out that way very organically, so.
Another thing I really liked about all that input was there were so many of the teachers who respond that were obviously very enthusiastic about being the district's 720.
So what we'd like to do is after the vote, Scott and Keith would step out and make a phone call so that while we're in session, we can give the public an everybody an update. Vote hard.
If we could just like to clarify in writing the motion, so we have extend, extend an offer to and enter into negotiations with Dr. Mike Redmond.
Correct. Yeah, we would approve the contract at the next.
Yep.
After it's.
Extend the offer and enter into.
She's right, she's right, there's a lot of details to be worked out, that's to be done before.
Great.
Everybody agree to that, Mike?
Thank you.
Okay, let's do a roll call then.
All right. Bowerman?
Yes.
Hallett?
Yes.
McIan?
Yes.
Pos?
Yes.
Tomzick?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Miss Watson?
Yes. All right, the motion carries. Okay, so.
So we'll do a song and dance routine while you guys.
You can do whatever you want.
Well, thank you, personnel, committee here and the staff.
Well, now we have to hold our breath to be a top fingers. You guys need to look this up.
I'm just. I'm just. I'm just. I've got. And to show you.
I was hoping that this would be his.
So I want to.
I was. I was. I was. I, yeah. I don't. 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 While we're here, Dale would like to.
I just, I just thought while we're waiting here, I just wanted to say, proper teaching perspective, on behalf of the teachers, a big big thank you for your standing up, paying the teachers and other members of the district, helping to provide feedback and to sit in and actually have our own experience in the interview. That was really revealing, really, really helpful. And then the way that you solicited to back from, you know, everybody at Chosenshaw, the students from the school was really, really encouraging and something that we deeply appreciate, so I wanted to make sure you heard that.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who participated and shared their thoughts. You know?
Yes, on behalf of the MSA, we'd like to echo that. The unlicensed staff were really pleased to be part of the opportunity to provide feedback correctly and interviewing and really ask some challenging questions and answers.
No one, you're really.
On behalf of the MSA, I'm seeing one from this email, chat on our, on behalf of the vote.
Well, thank you for your participation here.
Hey, sorry we have to prove that contract on the front.
We'll see if it's arranged or not, that might be.
Assuming he says, yeah, well, assuming.
I doubt, I doubt we have that.
Probably November 13.
Probably 13. But as Rachel pointed out, there's a lot of ramp up, ramp down, there's co-employment issues, there's.
Talking to the other district, so.
Would it be fair to say likely approve of contract in November?
I think that's a reasonable.
Also, it's M.A.A.
Oh, yeah, plus it's M.A.A. Oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm.
Keith was smiling. Keith was smiling, he was very.
Let's let him brush his face.
Well, in not good circumstances.
Okay, we're still on, so I'm happy to report that we were able to get ahold of Dr. Redmond and he is ecstatic, he's really excited to join us and he could be potentially connecting tomorrow or Wednesday to meet us over, so we have a super to, congratulations. Yes. All right, yes, thanks to the personnel. All right, yes, thanks to the personnel committee, a lot of work. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All right, no discussion. All those in favor to say you're proud of saying hi?